Good evening, and I'd like to call the order. This Board of Directors Business Meeting for Tacoma Public Schools, Thursday, November 7th, 2019. Would you all please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
General Counsel, would you please call the roll?
President Stein.
Here.
Vice President Wenskill.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
Director Cobb.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item number four on the agenda, oath of office. It's an exciting night. We get to welcome a new colleague to the dais, and at this time, I would ask Elizabeth Bonbright to please come up to the dais. Congratulations. We're very excited to have you join us. We're going to go through the formalities here. We're going to make you suffer on live television. So, welcome. Do you have anybody in the audience that you'd like to recognize?
Well, I do. My two daughters are with me tonight, and they'll be up to help giving me, help me give the oath of office, so Megan Thompson and Heidi Thompson, and also dear friend Jim Bilbao, and Laura Fox, and Ryan Chambers.
Excellent. Welcome. Thank you all for being here. And Elizabeth, if you'd like to invite your daughters up, we can move forward with the oath of office. Hello.
Welcome.
Hello, Elizabeth's daughters. Welcome.
Megan and Heidi.
And who has the first line?
That would be me.
Okay, Megan, you may proceed.
Got you. All right, hello everybody. Okay, you'd after me. I, Elizabeth Bonbright.
I, Elizabeth Bonbright.
Am a citizen of the United States.
Am a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Washington.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly, faithfully, diligently.
Truly, faithfully, and diligently.
And impartially perform the duties.
And impartially perform the duties.
Of the office of Tacoma School District Number 10.
Of the office of Tacoma School District Number 10.
Director, position five.
Director, position five.
In and for Pierce County, Washington.
In and for Pierce County, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
Congratulations. Yeah, we'd like to invite you to the dais, but first, I think we probably should take a new team photo.
And shake your hand.
Congratulations.
Thanks, thanks so much. Come on, Josh, yeah. Thank you. How exciting. Thank you.
Normally, all of that is here, but since we're in the [inaudible].
And before we move on to item number five on the agenda, Elizabeth, welcome. We're excited to have you as the newest Tacoma School Board Director, position number five. Is there anything that you'd like to say?
Well, first of all, I'm very, very grateful to all of you for the great effort and patience you took to fill this position, and I appreciate all the candidates that applied, and I know that you had a tough decision, so thank you for picking me. And just know that I am dedicated to working with each and every one of you to, for the betterment of the children in this district.
Thank you. We appreciate the knowledge and expertise that you bring, and get ready for the fire hose to be unleashed. There's all sorts of good learning to do.
Bring it on.
I will move on to item number five on the agenda, strategic plan goals. Item 5.1, the adoption of strategic plan benchmark goals for the 2020 through 2025 strategic plan.
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors adopt the proposed strategic plan goals for the time period of 2020 to 2025.
A move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? I will remind the board that we met in a study session a couple of weeks ago and reviewed the preliminary recommendations from the superintendent for strategic plan goals and for the process that's going to drive out the update to the plan. And four of these goals are the same from the last plan, and we have added health and safety as a fifth goal, or as a, safety had been included as one of the four goals, we've added health, so it's now reads health and safety, and then we've added a fifth goal of operations. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero. I will now adjourn us for 10 minutes. We're going to move into a committee of the whole. That will be 90 minutes where we start to unpack the board priority of health and safety of students and staff. With that, we are recessed for 10 minutes. All right, I'm going to call back to order. This meeting, we've now transitioned from the business meeting to the committee of the whole. Tonight's topic is the number one board priority for the year, which is the health and safety of students and staff. And we have the graphic up. This is a process that we approved at the last committee of the whole, is a way for us to think about the flow-through of the committee of the whole, and the purpose of the committee of the whole, and the expected outcomes of the committee of the whole. So you'll see that we're in the second box with the blue arrow that says tonight, shaping our ideas, and the purpose tonight is for us to have a conversation and start to unpack the many different topics that are under this priority issue. Director Bonbright, normally I would start with you on the end, but I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you some professional courtesy tonight. I'm going to start with Director Cobb, and we'll just work our way right to left.
Okay.
And then we'll circle back to you.
Oh, boy.
Are we starting with just general?
Just general, you know, the, we, when we were talking through at the retreat, working our way towards this as a priority, I think we recognized that there were a number of issues that fall under this category. And for us to, then, we have three study sessions that are already on the schedule that relate to this priority issue of health and safety. And so the purpose of tonight's meeting is to start to publicly talk about those different priority issues that each of us had, in an attempt then to winnow down to how do we use those three days, those three dates that we've identified for study sessions.
Okay, so I just, I'm just trying to scope my comments right now.
Sure.
Am I going to get another chance to speak, or is this just opening?
We have 90 minutes. So this is kind of...
Am I responding to the doc, to the...
This is Director Cobb's perspective on the priority issue.
On health and safety, okay. I started to allude to this, I think, at our last study, regular board meeting study session, I'm not sure. But I think, as we talked about before, this topic of health and safety is really big, and so I appreciate this time to get more specific about what we mean when we use those words. One thing that I think I've mentioned in the prior meeting also is that physical safety seems pretty, like a clean, one of the, maybe one of the cleanest sets of considerations within that broader bucket, like the physical safety, and I think there's, we've talked in the past that there are elements of, like, what's under consideration in a potential bond package, improve some physical security kinds of things, but we also talk about on the human and prevention side of things, and collaborations with law enforcement. So I think that all of that is an easier bucket to get our hands around. But then I don't have, like, the medical background to go along with the considerations around health, but I think thinking in the concepts, in the, in concepts of, like, physical health and mental health might be potential buckets to chunk things into. I have specific comments about the proposed, like, the template we've been using and what's already been there.
Sure.
But I can save those until after we go around. But generally, my general comment about it, and I'll wait on specifics, my general comment is, I think that just as we've added health to the strategic plan goal, I think one of the, however we decide to make the buckets, I think one of the things that I'm really interested in getting a handle on, and after we define those buckets, is the current state around each of them, so that we have a starting point to start benchmarking off of and to start setting goals around, like, what's our current state? What can we, from the data that we currently have, know about the current state of staff and student health from what we have, and what other data do we need to gather? And then with that too, this is still a general comment, I'd like, one of the outcomes, I guess it's getting specific, one of the outcomes of this work to be that we develop some kind of logic model about the connections we think exist between mental, physical health and student academic outcomes, and within that logic model, kind of where do we intervene directly as a district, and where do we partner to address the needs and, or to address the connections between student and staff, physical and mental health, and the outcomes we want to see eventually related to academics, like, what's our role, what's community role, what's our partners' roles, so that we have something to use as the common, and the common theory of action around the work that we're doing and the goals that we're setting in this area.
All right, thank you. Director Leon.
Yes, so I think that we do, we will have lots of options of ways we can discuss students and staff wellness, so wellness being physical, mental, emotional safety. So if we can parse this out and to try to have kind of directed conversation around, for example, depression identification, improvement of depression in students and staff, and all the different ways in which our organization can identify, prevent, and improve, for instance, depression, you could do the same thing for anxiety, obesity, diabetes, for physical issues, bullying also. So there's many more that I haven't mentioned that we could start to discuss. And so for depression, we have social-emotional learning curriculum, which is really a key piece to help prevent our staff and students from getting depressed. We've got counselors, we've got nurses, we've got nicer, more inviting buildings, all those things help mood. So there's lots of ways to improve and get to different pieces of the health, the health puzzle. So nurses, nutrition, health curriculum, delayed starts, all those things could be tools to get to a final outcome.
All right, thank you. Director Wenskill.
So I know that the city has money that they give to the district, so we have some partner, mental health partnerships. So I would, I have heard good things, and I've also heard some concerns, so I think we need to evaluate how those are working and change them up if they need to. But one of my issues with this, one of my worries, is mission creep. You know, we have, our mission is to educate the students, so how much money do we have to do all this extra things? I don't know that we have it internally, but the partnership part, outside people coming in, to me, makes a lot of sense. So I think that's about all I have to say right now.
Okay, thank you. I will continue with the conversation on mental health. I think that that's, you know, one of the top issues impacting students and staff in the district, and I agree that that is not a problem solely for the district to solve. I think it's a community-wide problem. I think there may be opportunities for us within the district to be able to refer students or to provide references, available services to students and families, and also on the staff side. You know, I think the challenge is that a lot of these students with our high ACE scores in the district, the trauma that these young people have endured early in their lives, not only the impact for the student, but what's the impact, the wear and tear for our teachers to have to deal with that? You know, I come from a public safety background, and while public safety, first responders tend to be the worst at seeking crisis counseling, it's an absolute necessity when you go through some of the terrible things that first responders go through. And I think similarly for our teachers, I would be interested, you know, we've launched the Whole Educator Initiative to really dig into, from a teacher's perspective, what are the sorts of mental health resources we may be able to provide for them on a daily basis, the trauma that they go through having to, to teach these young people that have experienced really terrible things. And that day after day, year after year, wears on a human being. So I'd be interested to see how we can do more or different, where we are, can it take the temperature from the teacher's side of things? And Director Wenskill, I agree, I don't, I think it would be challenging for the school district to try to, in and of itself, be the solution to these societal, community-driven issues. And as I've been thinking about it, we have a meeting coming up December 3rd with the City Council. That may be a good time during that study session, that joint meeting with the City Council to raise issues of, of mental health and talk about some of those outcomes, and to Director Cobb's comments, then with a logic model or a Venn diagram somehow determine what are things that the school district has specific control over, and what are things that outside agencies and other partner organizations in the community have control over? And then what's the funding? I think sometimes we start with the funding, and there's never enough funding, but if we have clarity on what we're trying to achieve, it gives us an opportunity to pursue a variety of funding sources. And I'm encouraged, our federal affairs team, Simon and Company is the same company that the city uses, so if we're going to go after some federal funding, legislative or grant funding, I think there may be some opportunities there. And also on mental health, then just kind of resource mapping, so trying to get a sense of what are the needs of student and staff, and what are the existing resources? I think we've done a pretty good job over the years with GIS mapping and having a better understanding of where these different resources exist in the community. And I'm interested in potentially exploring, we've been talking about this for years, clinics in the schools. I think I'd like to first start with what do we have in proximity to schools, and where's the demonstrative need, and how do we, how do we align that existing resource with the need? And then what are the gaps, and are there opportunities for us to help be a part of filling those gaps? And it may be more nurses in our schools, or more counselors in our schools, or it may be a better way, it may be, you know, family liaisons, it may be a different type of staff member that helps us to make certain that those students and families get the sorts of help and resources that they need. The other issue for me is bullying. And I, when we're talking about three study sessions that we have, I will make the pitch right now that one of them be on bullying. I've been doing a lot of reading lately on bullying, and to me, part of the, just the complexity of it is, you hear, and we've heard publicly from the dais families, talk about the impact that bullying has had on their student in school and in the community. We also just adopted a discipline policy that pretty much eliminates exclusionary practices, and so the tension between families that are negatively impacted by bullying, which I, you know, the research shows is generally a behavior that the student brings with them into the school. I think we have a, an obligation to make certain that we're not promoting it, that we're not doing things that would encourage it. But I'm also unaware of a bullying curriculum that we teach. I mean, we're not intentionally trying to encourage the behavior. If we are unintentionally allowing it to happen, then I think we need to lean in and address it. But it seems that it is a problem that comes into our school that gets exacerbated by social media and things that happen outside of school. And I would love, at a study session, to hear from families on both sides of the issue. I'd like to hear from families that have been negatively impacted by bullying, and I'd like to hear from the families of the students who have been on the side of doing the bullying, and how do we reconcile the, the impact? I think some of the things we're doing around social-emotional learning and the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative and restorative justice practices can help. But I also don't want to leave the impression of the community that by simply putting SEL and Tacoma Whole Child Initiative in play, that that's going to completely eradicate bullying. I think that that can be a strategy, a tactic that we apply to it, but I would welcome that sort of community conversation, to hear directly from people, how it's impacted their lives, and recommendations that they have moving forward. And also the legal challenges. I know families sometimes feel unheard or less than satisfied after an incident has occurred, but through FERPA and HIPAA and all of these legal requirements where we can't disclose, makes it really challenging to convey exactly what was going on at the time, and with our discipline policy, if it doesn't feel like the, the discipline is commensurate with the action, I think having dialogue, community dialogue will really help inform what we do. And I think bullying is a community-wide issue, so again, not just the district being responsible, but looking at it from our lens. And I think with both of these issues, coming back to our primary responsibility, which is policy setting. So how can we drive expectation through the policy that we set, that we have informed policymaking, and then in partnership with the superintendent, start to identify some solutions that lead to the outcomes that we collectively commit to achieving, and based on input from members of the community? Director Bonbright, do you, would you like to jump into this conversation?
Well, I'd like to absolutely say I love what I'm hearing, and this is all new to me. I haven't read most of the materials because it happened, you know, I just got here, but, but I do like...
Yes, you're excused.
But I will say that several things that each of you have said have really touched me in an important way, and, you know, obviously the bit about, you know, mission creep, I see, we've got so much work, you know, for K-12 for the education piece, but again, it's the whole child, and we have to look at every child and every family, and so we're part of a community. And I think that I love the way this community, this board and this, and the superintendent and her team talk about this, and I'm very, which is one of the reasons I applied, because I felt like there was people that have the same mind and heart about this work, and, but it's hard, because there's a lot to do, and nobody really owns the whole elephant, if you want to say. Everybody wants a piece of it, and it doesn't get done well if it's done separately. So one of the things I would certainly continue to encourage is the partnerships that are happening with the community, and also, and I liked many of the things each of you had said about the role and that what's important, mental health is critical, but again, so is, is physical health and, and social-emotional health. And, you know, of course, there's lots of ways to address this, and I, and I've looked at kind of the format of how we're addressing this with, you know, with kind of asking the superintendent to give us, you know, kind of risks and, and different perspectives on things, and the data that we're developing. I hope that when we put together the benchmarks and the, the targets and the pathways to reach our goals in each of these areas around health and safety, that we think creatively about new approaches and innovative ways to not feel like we have to do it ourselves, but who can we reach out to that we haven't talked to? I think there's a lot of private funding out there that could, could help augment some of the work we're doing and get some other folks involved to, because it takes a village.
Yes, thank you. All right, we've gone around, we've gotten our initial thoughts out there. Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent, do you have any, anything to add at this point?
No. I mean, I think, again, all your ideas, and it is a, it's a pretty... No. I mean, I think, again, all your ideas, and it is a, it's a pretty big topic. I mean, it's a, it's a diverse topic. And our, our issue will be, you know, I think talking about what you talked about, about getting a framework where we can address it and see that we've made a difference, that we've had an impact. That, that's the challenge.
How about outcomes? We talked more topic-driven. Are there outcomes under this category? Director Wenskill?
So I want to say something that's like out there, but I read some articles recently. New York Times had a big one about mental health issues getting worse during the school year and kind of leveling off during the summer. So there's a lot of stress on students during the year. And I look at cell phones and how they're a source of so many problems for our students. And this is mostly for sec-, you know, for ju-, middle school and also a little bit for high school, or mostly for high school. But I think the teachers would appreciate if we had some kind of a rule where they can't have cell phones on in the classroom and that we could, would enforce that. And I think it would be worth everybody's while if we had that. And then I talked to someone the other day. So there are people who do not want their children to have a phone when they're young, especially like middle school. If they could have a meeting at the beginning of all the people who do, do not support their children having phones and see that there are other parents who feel that way. And I think sometimes they feel really pressured to getting them for their students. And so the kids who don't have them are on the outs. But I think there's more people who really don't want their young children to have them. I know there's some for safety reasons that want that, but it would be a conversation worth having, I think. And it'd be nice if every school could kind of set that up. Okay, who here does not want their children to have cell phones? So, you know, 15 years ago, nobody had a cellphone in school and it was fine. There weren't any issues. So.
Yeah, that's a great point. And it is interesting to see younger students coming back to not wanting, like they've been inundated with technology and you start to see this swing back to people being more technology, I don't want to say technology adverse, but it's just not important, not important to them. And, and, you know, we're one of those families where when you're in middle school, you get a flip phone. And yeah, we're, we're going to deal with that. But there is a lot of social pressure. There's a lot of status. There's a lot of access and stimulation. And I think it's interesting, you know, as we look at some of the, the sleep issues, I've been reading about, more about blue light and just that impact that students have and, you know, good sleep hygiene. And how do we help, how do you help kids park their phones? How do you help parents park their phones and be good examples? I know we were, it was NSBA, a couple of years ago, at least, maybe three years ago, and Arianna Huffington was one of the-
Oh, yeah.
You remember that? She was one of the keynotes and she talked about the challenges of it. And she had actually marketed a little like bed for your cellphone, trying to institute this habit of you put your phone to bed at night and that's a way that you can begin to practice good sleep hygiene. So that is a, a great point, Director Wenskill. I'm interested in further fleshing that out. Director Cobb?
I just want to go back to your question about what, what are we trying to accomplish? And I think I want to go, in response, I want to point back to the need, I think, of the need for some current state analysis, like some baseline about where we are before we start getting specific about what we want to accomplish. I think in general, we want to improve the health and wellness of students and staff, but specifically like getting a handle on the data. And then back to the buckets too. Sometimes I, it's like you, you don't need to reinvent wheels. And so we talk about the whole child a lot, but we don't always talk in detail about the whole child, I mean, whole community, whole school, whole whatever. I can't always remember the three in order, the framework. And there's already buckets identified. Like we talk a lot about safe, engaged, supported, challenged, and healthy. But those buckets around it, like health education, I mean, that's primarily tackled in the classroom, but there's other ways too. Social and emotional climate, we're tackling that. Counseling, psychological and social services is a bucket. Nutrition and environment and services, a bucket. Health services, a bucket. Physical environment, like the physical safety, a bucket. So I just, and yeah, I just want to loop us back to that too, as we start thinking about bucketing things. And then lastly, in response to what you're saying about bullying, I think too, with bullying, I feel like that gets us further down the continuum of like buckets and things. I feel like bullying is a behavior. And so then it's like, what's the function of that behavior? And what's the root cause? What's, like, is it an academic struggle? So the student is acting on ways? Or is it some unresolved or a trauma that the student is responding to? Is it a mental health thing? So I think the, the expression of the need is the bullying behavior. But then it goes backtrack to how would we bucket that once we identify the root cause? Would we put it in a mental or behavioral health need? Or would we put it? So I think all these things are good. The more we can like create, for me, and maybe this isn't how other people's brains work, but this is clearly how my brain works, the more that we can like get explicit and clear about what all these behaviors or needs are that we want to figure out how we are addressing directly, like through like health education and through like suicide prevention education and through all these things that we are doing directly, the more we can figure out what we do in partnership. And then like setting priorities, like what's included in the template already is some reference to depression and anxiety. And I think, and I don't know, but I think those are like very often occurring forms of mental health challenges. So if we wanted to say, we want to prioritize really high incidence issues on the mental health or physical health side of things, or like just getting clear with the buckets, understanding what's commonly underneath them. And then the same way that we set those priority benchmarks around academics, identifying what are those priority areas that we want to address? And then what are the strategies, whether it's later school start times or whether it's partnerships? I think just getting it all laid out is what I hope that we're, we get to through this process.
Director Leon?
So I think you mentioned having some numbers, a baseline of where we are and a way to measure the healthy youth surveys, which exist for the county, which are public. Our Tacoma ones are not publicly available. We know the data and we can all say it correlates with the county. So I'll just give you some examples briefly of kids that have felt so sad or hopeless every day for the past two weeks. Forty percent of the kids feel that way as seniors. The numbers are slightly better as you go down younger ages. So it's done in, for the, the public that's listening out there, 12th, 10th, 8th, and 6th grade are the years that those are, those are measured. And another example would be, have you seriously attempted or thought about attempting suicide in the past 12 months? Twenty-three percent of seniors have said they seriously had thought about attempting this. And did you make a plan? Twenty point nine percent said yes, they made a plan. So, and I'll just hit a couple more. I'm not going to go through the whole survey. It's quite long. But anxiety, feeling nervous, 32% of seniors feel anxious more than half the days or more, every day or half the days while they're in high school. And the sleep data is even more concerning where 80% of the high school seniors get less than seven hours of sleep and 50% gets less than six hours of sleep. And 25% get less than five. It's very large. And those, that's data that we could, yes, we, we're not, we're not going to, no, we measure the same kit every year it's taken because it's a voluntary survey. But it's, it's, it's a, it's a good measurement at this point. We have, you're several points, everybody's made points about partnerships. We can't do this alone. There's no way, right? This is, this is, this is, we're a school system. We're here to educate, but we can't take on everything that the society wants to pile on us. So absolutely not. And we have excellent partners out there that I think want to partner with us and some that maybe don't realize how much they would benefit their, their mission if they partnered with us. And so we accentuate some of those. Just give a few examples. I've been meeting with the, the City Council, the mayor's office, our health organizations here about the possibility of, you know, how do we expand high school's health centers, right? Something that has a lot of data that shows academic improvement and, and decrease in suicide, substance abuse, unintended pregnancies, you name it, almost anything that derails kids' lives. But who's going to pay for it? So the idea of potentially a levy, a city, a city-run levy, not a school levy, but a city levy to do that, to help the health organizations pay for those multi-cares doing it for Oakland right now. Community healthcare's doing it for Bethel. But we, we need it for all of our high schools. So there are, there's money out there available. Some of you probably heard Kaiser just partnered with Highline School District and about five other school districts in the, in the, in the state to study health and how they can improve health outcomes and connect academic outcomes for kids. So bullying comes right in line with all this. I mean, it, it is almost a symptom, right, of mental health problems. And then becomes, becomes kind of the aggressive instigator, whatever we want to call it, the, the cholesterol that gives you the heart, the heart attack, or the cocaine that gives you the heart attack. It becomes that. It becomes the, the terror on a kid's life. So social emotional learning, yes. The restorative justice, yes. All those things will, will improve. Having a health center in your school can help. That's high schools. Some places have them in middle schools, elementary schools. But the counselors, the, the nurses, they are able to identify and see these things early and get the kids to the resources. Are we going to have, you know, a physician at every elementary school? Probably not. But I think we have to have the resources to get them to those, to our partners that are out there. So there, we can't fix it all ourselves. And we can really strive to bring these partners together to make great improvements. I think we're, we've done so many good things in this district and we're on the cusp of just reaching even just greater, you know, greater bounds. So.
Thank you. Any other comments, thoughts? So we have three dates identified for study sessions. I hear an interest in a better, a deeper understanding of existing data. Framework, process. Are we ready to consider topics? How do you want to proceed with, you know, I mean, it's the challenge of time is of the essence, but we also want to make certain that we do our due diligence. Thoughts on what we do with these study session dates?
What are the dates? Do we have, I mean, have you already picked them or?
Yeah, we have them on the calendar. I don't have them in front of me.
Okay. I just was wondering if they're coming right up or if we've got, if it's months away or?
I think we have, the first one is December.
They're about every six weeks, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Spaced about. And my recollection is the first one is in December, but don't, don't hold me to that. Director Garcia?
We just, and based on the last committee of the whole, we had to solidify when we're going to come back for the budget one as well. So there was some changes in calendar. So.
I think the budget is on the calendar for November 18th.
Yep. So we can bring those back and connect Ms. Bonbright to the, the dates.
Okay.
Okay.
I just want to, you know, I'm taking notes. I just, are we to the place that we that we can paraphrase the specific objectives that we were trying to accomplish? So I'm trying to, or are we not there yet?
I think we could still discuss. I think we're still in, I think we're still in discussion phase.
Yeah.
Okay. I just don't want to make sure I don't miss something.
Okay.
Yeah. And you know that, so this is our fourth committee of the whole. And again, as a reminder, this is our formal way to have informal conversations. So, you know, where we are in the evolution of this committee of the whole is a tool for us. We're still working through how to use it. So it's because open public meeting acts prevent us, any more than two of us at a time, this is a chance to just get our collective thoughts out and to build off of things that we hear that we agree with or disagree with. So I, I think, you know, we're a half an hour into the conversation this evening. We're still, and we're unpacking some really important issues. I think we probably, I, I threw out the study session angle just to have us think about, we put the dates on the calendar, but are we ready? Are there things sequentially that need to happen, data that we need to see, conversations we need to have? Director Cobb?
Well, just for me to, I think this builds off of the last two times we spoke. I think a key objective for me would be to, drawing on the data that we have, put together the best picture we can about the current state of the health and safety of our students and staff. Like, that just seems like a foundational need for me to, I feel like we're, we do have healthy youth survey data. We have other kind of information from services that students have received or been referred to just out there, but just kind of the fullest picture that we can put together about the current state. And I think things, we've mentioned certain data points right now, but things that we don't always see and maybe the school nurses see them, like the number of students with chronic health conditions that require a health plan, like some of that kind of information too. Or I don't know, even though I think there's a state statute, so we probably do it. Like, do we do vision screenings anymore? And that kind of thing. Do we collect the data from those? Do we know how many kids end up needing glasses or eyewear and who don't have it at the time that they're screened? Just, just data like that, that's probably floating around somewhere or not captured with a student's record, but somewhere. I just, I know that's a big lift, but if we're trying to build towards an infrastructure where we're addressing either directly or in partnership, the holistic needs that kids have, like what are those pieces of information that we can cobble together from existing sources to tell the, again, the fullest picture of the current state as possible? I think that would be a key objective for me, getting an understanding of the current state of health and safety.
So maybe that becomes the topic of the first study session.
It seems to me that we need, sorry, but even that needs to be narrowed a bit, you know, about, you know, what specifics do people want the data about? Because some of it is going to be, you know, stuff that's in the, the youth survey, we can get that and we can look at that. If we're finding out information from school nurses, that's a good source. They can tell us, you know, percentages. Other things are not going to be as, you know, easy to, to get to. And so, and what you don't, I mean, we've all been apart where you had all this data and you have no idea what to do with it after that either. And so the more we can be specific about, and some of it might even be processed. I mean, it might be, okay, so how is every school, you know, checking for suicide idolations or something like that? I mean, I just think the more information you can give us about what you want, you know, what you want, it'll be easier to get it. And it'll be easier for us to assign it and plan it and get it back in a, in a timely, in a timely timeline. I, I don't want to just go out and start saying, hey, what can we dig up? You know, we need specifics.
Director Cobb?
I totally agree that just sending you on a wild goose chase is not productive and probably not the most strategic use of time. But just in this conversation that we've had, like in bringing up issues of bullying or incidents of depression and anxiety, I think we probably are operating from some assumptions about the prevalence of some of these things. So I don't know what the right set of measures are. And I'm not asking that you like run through like your full list of the possibles, but just for these things that we keep going back to in particular, like just what do we know? Rather than like just the assumptions that we have. Like what do we know in terms of like even the number of kids that have, or had office discipline referral because of bullying or just some of that kind of stuff?
Okay. Director Bonbright?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, I, I think there's a reporting mechanism for disciplinary action, or even if there isn't discipline, but bullying and those kinds of things. I, I would think that that would be an easy skim. But I agree that the deep dive is, we could be more specific about what it is that we're, we're actually looking for. But I, I like the youth study that you talked about. I mean, if, even if we went through that, I mean, not right now, but, you know, just as a group, you know, another playtime and just highlighted the things that we find particularly intriguing and then find out if there's anything from the schools that they're collecting around those same issues, that would be helpful. I also am wondering about, there seem to be a lot of health organizations that are choosing school, school districts. And I'm, of course, being new to this, I'm just sort of wondering, is that an opportunity for us? Is there, I mean, we have a lot of different health providers in Tacoma area. And I'm just wondering is, can we get a sponsor? Can we, can we join with one of these school, I mean, one of these health organizations in our community to say, we need to do a study. Can you help us? Fund it, run it, whatever. Can you help us fund it, run it, whatever? And, cause I know the district doesn't have a lot of staff to be doing that, so I'm just, just a thought. And maybe this has already happened and I'm missing something, but.
Yeah, I think, I, I, I mean, we have a good relationship with all of the providers, MultiCare, in a different way with the Oakland Clinic.
Franciscan, I mean, there are a lot of, we have.
And we've worked, I think, effectively.
Group help.
Yeah, we've, we've worked effectively. I think, uh, sometimes the challenges exist outside of our organization. I know the healthcare is a very competitive field.
Yep.
And so some of those things may be outside of our control in terms of can we have a single partner? But I think, you know, we're, what we're trying to do is.
Or a group of partners, I don't.
Yes, and I think what we're trying to do is identify, um, I think the need, right? We keep, I hear us keep coming back to, what is the quantifiable need that we have? And then how do we address that need?
And I guess I'm just thinking that the health providers have a lot of information we don't have about the same families and children. So, um, I totally, uh, agree with Andrea that it's, it's really, uh, Director Cobb, sorry. But it's, it's really important to try and, and figure out what's the data we currently have and then we know where the North Star is.
Yeah, and I think to the superintendent's employ, uh, point, what we're seeking to examine. We do have quite a bit of data internally and externally. So what is it that we need to see in order to identify outcomes? I think Director Leon and then Director Cobb?
It would be difficult to get, um, all that medical data from a, the health institutions to share with us because of their privacy around that. Most of our, potentially could be, most of our, uh, staff are Kaiser patients, is that how that works or they can go anywhere?
Not anymore.
They can go anywhere.
They can go anywhere, okay. So there are, there are, I guess, all the different systems at this point. So there, um, they, they would like to get involved, um, so just healthcare in, uh, clinics in, in the schools, but they aren't able to, um, one, one of them is not going to pay for all the healthcare clinics.
Right.
That, that won't.
Right.
Be able to be done financially for them. So, um, do we partner with all of them to have one or two clinics covered by them? But that's also gonna be a lift that might be beyond their capabilities. And I'm, I'm trying to have those conversations with, with those groups too.
And just, just to be clear, I wasn't talking about them funding a clinic. I was talking about them helping get the data that.
Yeah.
Uh, Director Cobb's talking about, which I totally agree with, you have to have the baseline data or you can't, you're moving forward blind.
Yeah.
So, and it seems to me that tonight we could figure out what those key issues, whether it's bullying or, um, you know, we have already a list, mental health, suicide attempts, all those things, just make a list and then know what we're trying to get. And if we don't have the data, maybe we, or all of it, to give us a, a good enough picture, maybe go to some of the community partners like health folks who would have some of that and say, we need, we don't need individual, we need generally speaking on, you know, what is the, what is the percentage of senior age children, you know, uh, young youth that are coming to you with these problems? I'm not, I, I think that's doable.
It's a good idea, I think it would be difficult, but I think doable. I think we would have to, um, have a conversation around that, make it anonymous.
No, it would have to be, absolutely.
So they would share that information. This healthy kids, um, you know, data is anonymous and self, and, and volunteer.
Right, absolutely.
And then there's, there's, um, surveys that, um, you have for wellness with the staff, I presume. Staff surveys, other some wellness service with the staff that they say if they're feeling.
You know, so with a new health plan, there is a survey. I'm not sure if any of that information's gonna be, you know, aggregated and shared with, with, uh, with us or will be available. It's definitely for the healthcare providers to kind of market, you know, what they're doing. So we don't ask, we don't, the district doesn't ask, uh, staff about their health in a survey type issue.
Okay.
And.
Director Cobb?
I think that this topic needs, causes us to think a little bit differently than we've thought about, it's like academic stuff. Because many of these issues that we're talking about don't impact every student and, or every staff member. And so with this topic in particular, I'm, I'm, I think we should be thinking like pragmatically, like what's practical? And what's like, not, um, like trying to collect every data on every student to know every detail. But even if, if for the purposes of this benchmark, I'm, I'm trying to think of in the con, uh, make the connections between. The budgeting discussion we were having and thinking about staffing ratios and talking about laying out that matrix. So there's a question in my mind about, from a health and standpoint, what's the staffing look like at particular buildings related to health, health services? But then there's also a thread of questions about the prevalence of certain things like bullying or other, um, behaviors that might indicate a student has some unmet need. And on the staff side too, or attendance patterns that are attributable to health-related issues. Like when you say, why were you absent, it's health-related, like there's some things like that. So I don't know that all this data needs to, like if we, if we need to be even thinking at the starting point at the student level, if we should just be thinking like building level or even for some of these measures, like the current state and a district level, if that's the level of data that we can get to from healthy youth survey. Use, uh, because, and I don't think that this work will be, um, I think that this work should be useful for the process that we're gonna have to engage in related to establishing what are the priority benchmarks under the umbrella of health and safety. But I think thinking differently in the sense of not necessarily about like student level information, about what's the best picture we can paint kind of more holistically about the, like the health and safety of our various buildings when we can, or the health and safety of districts, or when it's appropriate. Cause I mentioned already, like how many students have a, um, chronic health condition that requires, like there's some thing to that too. So I don't, um, mean to suggest that this exploration of the data should take like a huge, um, should require a huge lift or should require us accessing, um, personally identifiable information from health records necessarily on individual kids and families. But how can we tell a story that feels accurate about the current health and safety needs? And then to start, um, identifying solutions from there.
How are nurses reporting what's happening in the schools? Track that?
Keep, uh, track of healthcare plans, five oh four, the number of those. Those would be identified as what would be the additional supports. They keep logs, um, of students in, students out, uh, what are the general features of that? Everything from, um, a student identifying self-harm to, uh, a tripped. And so they, they keep those records as well.
And what about just general observation of what's happening in schools? Or we, how do we connect?
They keep records, they keep records of their own students along with those, you know, safety plans and, um, the reoccurring things. We, we don't, you know, we haven't collected them that I, that I know of.
No, and, uh, be fair, it's, um, we all recognize that, uh, the amount of work that they're doing with those health plans is significant work. And so I'd really caution us from, um, expanding that, you know, even when we get into, um, oftentimes we're, as we go deeper into this, and I would imagine this is a question that has no right to go away, which is, is how are we ensuring our students and staff are safe and healthy, right? Will evolve even in our data collection. A lot of the data we collect around bullying is, uh, if it's, uh, discipline active, right? So it results in a discipline as a result of that. I mean, there's several different reasons why we would not want to create a record, um, if it wasn't a discipline oriented. And then you look at different categories by guidelines where we have to categorize them different. Harassment and intimidation is categorized differently than bullying. And so, you know, we'll learn as we go through this data conversation, um, we'll get sharper with those questions. And it'll really come back to is, as, um, I think Enrique, Director Leon mentioned is, there may be limitations to whatever that data is, but is that enough to get us started in whatever conversation that we may need? And that may help us develop other better data systems and data collections as you think about the development of benchmarks. I'll remind us that we are in the middle of building a data warehouse in the team and they are very nimble. And, uh, we have huge transformations of data that are coming in from a budget and HR and a student achievement side right now. And so, um, we do have to be very focused of if we're gonna ask them to create something different, um, some patience and grace. So we might have to rely on what's already there.
Director Wenskill?
So, um, when we look at bullying, I think the issue to me is, is it being solved at the school level? And are people being satisfied with the, um, results? And we have heard from some parents from some schools that they're not and they don't feel like they're getting, um, people to pay attention and they're very distressed. So I think, you know, I think we have a really good person dealing with that at Central School now. So it goes on, you know, to another step. But it's, uh, how do we deal with it at the individual school? If we keep hearing repetitious, um, you know, the same schools keep coming up and they're not solving the problem. So to me, that's very important. And I think that does happen in our district. And even though we can't really tell them, um, what's happening, we can say to them is being dealt with or, you know, we're, we're taking this very seriously, we are dealing with it. And at least it gives them an answer instead of saying, we can't tell you anything. Then it's like, you think nothing's happening, you know?
Right.
I think some of that, you know, and, uh, when you're in those situations is, um, it's, it's a difficult conversation to have with both sides of the family of, and by law, what we can share is the outcomes. And so, um, and, you know, if my own child was in it, I would hear the same thing as, is why I can't tell you, therefore I'm not. There's a lot of conversations that we work with that are explaining the legal reasons why we cannot share more details. But that's still sometimes perceived as, you're not telling me anything.
You're not doing anything.
And you're not doing anything and, and it's sensitive and, you know, and it's, it's a difficult conversation when you're hearing that, that piece. And so, you know, we're definitely trying to be empathetic of that, but that's not the message that we're trying to send. And, and at the same time, there are legal restrictions to what we can and can't share and, and so.
Listen, you may say it very gently and really let people, and really work with them. And there are, there are instances where the parent just doesn't want to hear that. Or, you know, they're sensitive and because they are upset and because it's my child, that, um, it's difficult to hear that. I don't get to know who it is, so I could go talk to their mom or go talk to their dad. So there's just lots of different variations of how it plays out. But we, you know, and I totally agree that we need to, need to be sensitive and take time and, you know, help people understand, you know, what the issues are.
Dr. Garcia?
Director Wenskill said something that was insightful, uh, many times over the, the course, but, uh, it hit me the last meaning of making sure that we recognize what, what is in our locus of control and what we, can we do now? And it really, and as I was thinking of the health and safety and I started to think about, so, um, there's all different measurements of success, uh, for a student. But we do have some that we've already established. And who are some of our most vulnerable populations? And would it be helpful to try to have as first, knowing that this isn't gonna be the only conversation that we have, to start to think of through the lens of some of those vulnerable populations? And how are we having the same conversation through the lens of, for example, I'm a McKinney Vento student? Uh, knowing that we could look at them in, in a, in a manner, in a focus group, because unfortunately there's a large enough group, and say, so what are our current systems to ensure that they're healthy and safe? What are the types of partnerships that we could work to that maybe not be so overwhelming, uh, in a community perspective? What are the flexibilities of systems that we allow and support? And that may, may help us take some next steps versus, um, when I look at, for example, uh, the bullying data, there are more students in McKinney Vento than students that are being disciplined for bullying. Doesn't mean that they're not both challenging, um, but there is a large group of McKinney Vento students that might help us focus the conversation around how are we developing systems of health and safety news? Now, if I add harassment, intimidation and not knowing how many students that bullying, uh, student may have bullied, that number may dramatically increase.
Director Cobb?
This conversation again makes you think that we have to think differently. And so I say it from saying things out loud while we're in the community of whole context. So to, to follow up on what you're saying, like even thinking about what kind of, I keep connecting this to the benchmarks because we've got a new addition of health there. But what kinds of things we are focusing on? Like in thinking kind of even in this tiered structure, like are we going to have goals that are about how ensuring that students have kind of universal access to some preventative kind of strategies that we're implementing? So, or are we gonna, or are we gonna have benchmarks that are designed by nature, like more targeted in nature? Are we gonna start talking about subsets of kids or thinking about in more of a targeted, like a tier two prevention? Or like how this, because this is not, I think all kids need access to prevention related to mental health and physical health and all that's, all of that. But are, is our focus gonna be on the prevention, that prevention aspect that we probably do have a greater role to play in through education? Or is our focus going to be on the success of our identification of students in need of support and their connection to kind of those prevent, those responsive services? Like what kinds of benchmarks even, or what kinds of priorities will we set? Because this isn't like third grade reading. It's not that, it's not all third graders have access, have access to the instruction they need to be successful readers. It's not that.
As part of our update to the strategic plan and benchmarks, the process that we identified was you would bring back to us recommendations. Where are we with benchmarks in the health and safety goal?
We haven't even started because you've just tonight adopted the goals.
Yeah.
And so now we would go into a launch and do a community process, the accordion process. So staff, uh, will do a community outreach. What are the things that we should be considering about measuring? What are the things that we value? We'll engage you folks in that process. We'll ask, uh, once again, staff at all kinds of different levels, uh, to think about what can we measure? What should we be thinking about measures? What are the different data sets that are available? And then ultimately you would folks would bring the, we would bring recommendations back for you to adopt.
And, uh, on what timeline?
The proposed timeline is, is you would adopt those in, I want to say the last week of April, the last board meeting of April.
With the accordion process, you would come, it's iterative, so you would come to us trying to get a sense of if we, if our priority becomes health and safety as you're building benchmarks, knowing that there are existing benchmarks that in the, in many of those goal categories, the existing benchmarks, there will be recommendations to continue the existing benchmarks. Like we're not starting from scratch. This goal area is expanding, so we have existing safety benchmarks. Could you, you know, put you on the spot?
We did.
The, you know, we're this, the, the little bit of the chicken and the egg where we're trying to solve problems, but we're not really certain what those problems are. And I think there's a natural alignment with the strategic plan benchmarking process as we're thinking about next steps and how to move forward. I mean, we could solve all sorts of problems. What are the problems that we should be solving in that accordion process is, is that community engagement, staff engagement of what are the priorities? Director Cobb?
Yeah, because when we established this priority, the connection to the benchmarks wasn't there. Cause we added health, um, when we reviewed the first draft of the benchmark goals. So we were having this priority setting conversation before that happened. So I just wanted to follow up my previous comment because I forgot one thing. And in this process of looking at data and establishing these priorities and getting more narrow, I, director, I mean, Dr. Garcia said something earlier about the data and there's, there's this other consideration I think we need to keep at the forefront about what data about students when we are intervening needs to be divorced from the other data, their other record. I think there is a conversation to be had too, as we move through this process about our privacy and what of a student's record do we think should continue forward with them as a matter of continuity of service and support? And what things should stay at the school level and not keep, like level of, level of, kind of, I just think about student privacy. And as we dip into this world of health, I think there's more considerations to be had around. student privacy and just, I'm not going to repeat myself, but you know what I'm saying.
Dr. Garcia. Superintendent Suntory.
No, I was just gonna, all I was gonna is go back to what Director Cobb said, that, you know, it shouldn't be either or on the goals, you know, that we need to have some, you know, narrative type goals that have, you know, a broader outcome and some specifics. And I think that the feedback we got from the board is that, you know, they want to add those specific measurable, you know, numbers in addition to, you know, looking at, you know, if you do a staff survey, you know, and say, hey, are you feeling healthier this year than you did last year? That's helpful. And then also, you know, what are the incidents of sick days that teachers taught? So a combination of those kind of data points.
Dr. Garcia.
Yep, just two quick ones. We have not made any assumptions of any benchmarks that would roll through. We wanted to make sure that we took your, followed your lead on the goals first. And so I apologize. And since health and operations are new, you know, we've, we've started to dream a little bit. It really is going to come back to you helping us identify what are the priorities from your lens in there. I'll remind us too, is we've learned some lessons in benchmarking is sometimes you can have a lot and you can't measure them and you can't report them and you can't monitor them and you can't do, everything can't be the most important thing. So we'll continue to think about, even in this conversation around health developmentally, we'll probably want to keep that focused. We'll want to keep the safety ones focused as much as possible, same in academics. And then to add on to Director Cobb's comment, we have worked really hard to not put in information internally. We, we say, we want to make sure that we're able to use data for good, not evil. And we are very cautious about a student being mislabeled. Unless we have the expertise and instruments that can measure with fidelity. And those are, and so we, we would continue to encourage you to, to keep, be sensitive of that as well. How do we make sure that whatever we collect, that we're able to put parameters and safety guards to ensure that it can only be used to help a child?
Director Leon.
So there are many ways to, to measure. But we, we don't want to paralyze ourselves either with making, you know, impinging on someone's privacy in a way that could harm them, we've talked about that. Getting the low hanging fruit, so whatever data we feel like we can use that already exists, not building new data repositories or ways, you know, you just mentioned you've got a great data team, but they are, they're busy. So can we use information we already have? Can we partner with organizations like the Health Department? The Health Department has been offering to help us in evaluating a study that could look into if we decide to look at sleep with regard to depression, anxiety, the car crash information. So there are, so this, there are kids crashing their cars because they're tired. That's been, that's been proven because when places, some districts that take, give them more sleep, there's less car crashes. It's not perfect that every, every district that does this. We can get that information from the Department of Transportation. Look at numbers where we are, where we have been the past three years. And if we decide to do a late start, we can look at that later for car crashes. There are, I mean, there's depression, there's anxiety, there's all self-reported. So these are self-reported symptoms. We're not getting, I think it's going to be hard to get the data from a doctor's office and say, the official diagnosis of depression, the official diagnosis of anxiety. We, we could try, but I think it's going to be difficult. So it's self-reported symptoms that we're going with. We can look at the information around tardiness and that's kind of how kids are engaged in the school, suspension rates, those type of things also, and see if we have what, what interventions we make that will improve those. We may not know what one intervention does because we've got social emotional learning, we've got great teachers, we've got great new curriculum, we've got a new, you know, health curriculum also that's still being rolled out. All those things are gonna, I believe, we believe improve these outcomes of, you know, not just anxiety and depression, but the diabetes, the obesity. Getting kids more sleep can happen in, at home, yes. Sleep hygiene is so important. We talk about this all the time with my patients. So taking the phones off, out of the kids in school, help with the bullying, yes. I mean, that's a good idea too. You know, there'll be resistance from lots of different groups on lots of different topics, the phone specifically. We can expect that. But I think it's, it's, it's our duty to evaluate, you know, do a thorough, but not exhaustive could be, could paralyze us, but thorough to get to some outcomes that we feel like are important. And still to discuss what those outcomes are, I think we still have to, to nail those down ourselves. And we may not be able to get that today, but we could, we're having that discussion. So I appreciate all of us here having, having this, doing this work. So.
All right, where do we go from here? What are any logical next steps? It's good conversation. We, I mean, the, I am cognizant of the fact that as a district, we are down staff and we are down significant staff at central administration. So I don't want to be a part of creating busy work. I think we gotta have really focused work. So I, I'm gonna just invite discussion around, we need to give the superintendent direction. And if we're not ready to give the superintendent direction, what do we need as a board to be in a better position to give direction? What are the sorts of things that are going to help inform the sort of policymaking we would do? And the sort of guidance that we would give to the superintendent? Any thoughts?
Director Baumbruh.
I guess I'm just wondering, not knowing how much you guys have talked about this in the past. But, and I, I understand that the staff needs, you know, some direction on topic areas, I guess. And so is that something tonight that we could take the health and safety category and come up with five, 10, whatever it is, categories that we want to see what the data that exists looks like? Is that reasonable? Or I'm, I'm not sure if that's a good place to start, but it seems like we've been talking about some of repeat topics. So if we could come up with however many we feel is, would be helpful to give us the framework that Director Cobb especially was talking about in terms of just that baseline? Is that some direction that would help?
Yeah, possibly like being given the Healthy Youth Survey, for one thing, would be good. And the, taking the Healthy Youth Survey, well, being given the information.
Are you saying?
The last issue, the last iteration. Do it every other year, right? I think it's every other year.
Are you saying getting access to the Tacoma-specific data?
Mm-hmm.
So as a, I recognize that we have 21 more minutes that we've devoted to tonight's discussion. Would it be, I saw some heads nod. Do we want to take a few minutes to just brainstorm the sort of information that's of interest to us? And then the superintendent can help us reconcile what's more readily available? And what would be more difficult to get to start to try to? I mean, I don't want to stifle, I think we have to have these sorts of conversations about the data. And then we need to have a conversation around what's reasonable, what's the timeframe, the timing and sequencing. So do we want to take 10 minutes and just kind of round robin? Or what's on your mind in terms of the types of data we're interested in? And make a list and then work through the list? I mean, is that from the board perspective, does that make sense? I see heads nodding. Dr. Garcia.
Just would, building on one of your earlier comments of the, how are we gonna know in the benchmarks? One of the things that we learned when we were really doing the benchmarks is encouraging people to think about, so what does success look like? And then what evidence would we be able to provide you? That we were either meeting our shared goal or not meeting our shared goal? And so as you're thinking about this, it may be helpful for you to be starting to also frame, so what would that look like in a benchmark? So as you're looking at the data, think of your own children, your own grandchildren, your own neighbors and saying, so when I think of my child being safe, this is the evidence that I want to be able to see. Two, three things. When I think of my child being healthy, this is the evidence. And that will then at least maybe help you popcorn and help start to kick us all off and down that road of, and there may be data that's already collected and we're not making any decisions tonight. But I think it's, it's important to start to, to shape those conversations of what does success look like in these areas, healthy and safe? And what evidence would, would you accept that your child was healthy and safe? Two, three pieces, three, four?
Okay, so one of the, one of the things I'd like to know is the money that the city provides for mental health out of their tax, how is it used? What schools are using it? I know some have three days service, couple days service. And is it useful? And do the principals find that it's helpful? You know, it's however we could find that out. Because I know they've had discussions about that before because I've been part of it at one of the administrative conferences, so.
Director Baumbruh.
The way I'm looking at this to, to get at what everyone said here is maybe just making, back to buckets, maybe taking three bigger buckets and then talking about within each of those buckets, where those, what subcategories might work and that's where the benchmarks would come in. But like have a bucket on mental health, a bucket on physical health, a buckle on social emotional health. And then within each of those buckets, we could go back and say, well, bullying might cross many of those. But where is it, you know, where is the biggest fit or the natural fit? And sleep is huge issue. And, you know, all the different, all the different other pieces underneath that. But then at least start with a couple of big categories and then separated out. And I don't know, that's just how I think, but.
Director Cobb.
Good idea.
To the point of the buckets again, that's where my mind was just sitting for a while. And I went back again to the whole school, whole community, whole child framework and their buckets. Physical environment, we talked about that one. Health services is another bucket. Counseling, psychological and social services that encompasses some of the mental behavioral and social emotional health topics we're talking about. And then potentially physical education and physical activity. There are already buckets there. And so I don't know if we want to have our own spin on buckets, but as a starting point, it's a framework, I don't know.
Dr. Garcia.
The WISC model. This is what Director Cobb is referring to is, is a collaborative approach from educators and the CDC. So that would be the model that would maybe buckets to look within.
WISC, W I S, yeah, just sorry.
Dr. Garcia, what was the acronym again?
Whole child, whole school, whole community.
Okay, great.
Can you spell?
I cannot.
Superintendent Suntory.
I was, I was just gonna say that I'm not, that I'm, I think that you've, in these three study sessions, talked about enough ideas that perhaps the staff could come together and just, you know, say, hey, here's some buckets that we've heard and here's some areas under it and give it something to give you back? And say, so put a star by the ones that you really think you want to do. Because, you know, you've, you know, you've articulated, you know, a lot of different things and, and they blended in and, you know, overlapped. And so I think if we just, you know, if we made those categories and then gave it back to you and said, okay, give us comments or emphasize or, you know, what you're really thinking, then that would probably, that might be an easier process.
Yeah, I like that.
Thank you.
Yes. Director Wenskill, how do you feel about that?
It's fine.
Yeah.
It's a good process. I think within that, I'd like to see things around nutrition and exercise, right? Of course. So how do we measure nutrition? What's going in? We're not going to do caliper things like we did when we were all kids, on kids, right? That's not what's done. It's not healthy.
And, you know, and it may be, it may be that we come back and say, we don't have any way to know what they're eating. You know, I mean, here's what we're doing about lunch. Here's what we're doing about breakfast and here's the information we can give you about that. And then we might be able to suggest, you know, there's, you know, we might be able to do a, you know, a, a, take a look at what, you know, what students are self-reporting for nutrition. And again, though, the point of the buckets is to make sure that you make the main thing the main thing and that you focus, because we're not going to be able to do all of this. So when, if we focus on nutrition and what, you know, what it looks like, then that's something else we're not going to be able to do.
So what sort of timeline turnaround to have that to the board for our input?
I don't know, it's easy for me to talk. You know, what, today, what, today is Thursday, let me talk to Cabinet on Tuesday. And, you know, if we could get it within, you know, the next week after that, you know, something to you, I think, I think that's probably reasonable.
Can you plan to give us an update at next Thursday's board meeting?
Give you an update.
Part of the superintendent's report?
Sure.
So it gives you a week to work with your team to come back to us with?
Good.
Is the, is, point of clarification, is the, is it the CDC model? Is that the buckets you'd like us to start with? Or is it the physical, mental buckets?
Was that CDC wrong right there? Yeah, was that Director Cobb, what was the, what were you referring to?
It's the whole school, whole community, whole child model. And we often reference the, when it's a circular figure, we often reference the safe, engaged, challenged, supported part of the model. But it's these other buckets that sit around that. And the ones that seem to speak most closely to the conversation that we're having right now are nutrition environment and services. I should add too, to here, employee wellness, but that's not something we spend a ton of time on, but clearly in the buckets. Social and emotional school climate, physical environment. Now I'm naming them all, I feel like. Health services, counseling, psychological and social services, and then physical education and physical health. But when you read the descriptions, they do make, give some examples and it does touch on within these different buckets, the different pieces, topical areas that we've talked through tonight.
And Director Cobb, is that the CDC, is that the same? So Dr. Garcia, to answer your question, that's, we are, I think, talking about the same buckets?
I have a question.
Director Baumbruh.
Just a clarification. I love those, but I think they're more about the systems and not about the children. And so I think that, I just want to be wary that we're, they're talking about the social services that are available. Or I'm not quite sure, but the way you read them, it sounded like it was more, not so much the physical health of the child, but how they're dealt the, the, I, I don't know.
The agencies.
The agencies or their jobs or their roles. Like I don't have it in front of me, so I'm not quite sure. But I just want to make sure that we're, we're looking at it from a child perspective. But the services, that would be the benchmarks on, I guess, how we would measure it. But.
So I would say that with, with the model, that child's in the center. And your goals for them are that they're safe, engaged, challenged, supported. And this is how you go about getting to it.
That's what I was saying. This is the how, I just want to make sure the buckets include the what. And then the other place you might want to look, which is, I assume it's still around, it's called strengthening families, you know, that whole model, similar, but it's really from a, it's more from the child and family perspective. And that's what the community uses, I think. And this, this is a school-based model. I, I think it's great. I just think we should make sure we marry them. So we speak the same language to our community partners.
And did we, Dr. Garcia, did we clarify your question or?
No, but I, I think we have enough to go. There's a new model that just launched today too, just to confuse it even more. So.
Oh, cool.
There's a lot of work underneath there's around the big bucket of safe and healthy. And then I think what I hear, just for clarification, is we're okay with just starting with this idea of the difference between mental and physical safety and mental and physical health. And maybe starting there as a place to begin.
I think it's a good place to unpack. Director Leon.
Just to include the wellness of the staff in there too, as we're, the wellness of the staff.
I didn't mean the leave mail, thanks.
Just as we, as we evaluate, how can we evaluate the wellness? And look for ways to improve.
All right, Superintendent, do you need any more direction from the board?
I think, you know, we'll, we'll reflect what we've heard and what, you know, what we have. And then you can give us more direction about, you know, we need a little more of this or that. How about that?
And what's the best, how would you, would you like us to individually provide that feedback? What's the easiest way for you to assimilate all of our wise thoughts?
Well, I think if we, if we take the notes and we go back and we make a stab at putting them in. them into the buckets and, and what they are, and then give them back to you each individually and you take a look at them and say, no, 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 you totally misunderstood that. Or yeah, that looks good, I really wanna emphasize that point, then, then we can use that.
And are, and are we still thinking the next Thursday board meeting is the timeframe to have that sort of input from the board? Or it would be at a meeting following that?
I say meeting following that. So, you know, we're gonna need time to, you know, figure out how, you know, how about, how we're gonna do it.
Sure. I just wanna calibrate expectations. We wanna be reasonable. You know, we want this done tomorrow, but we're gonna be respectful of the time that it takes to get it done. So we can expect an update at the board meeting and then work product, probably that.
After that.
Well, that puts us right up against, we have WASD the following week and the week after is Thanksgiving. Do we wanna target, is?
Oh, and it doesn't have to be at one of your formal meetings to have the interchange going on in between. So what we really need to do is just a date when we're gonna, you know, kinda make that public, right?
Just wanna make certain, we're creating a process because you're gonna have five very motivated board members that are gonna have all sorts of individual thoughts. So how do we provide you the individual thoughts and then how do we come back? Cause we're, it takes three of us at least, right? Preferably all five of us to reach a decision point. So what's the best way? Are you, are you willing to, to receive individual input with a date on the calendar then for us to publicly collectively discuss it? Or what, what's a, what process makes sense?
Two of the competencies for social emotional learning is, one is self-awareness and then the second is social awareness. And so I'm over here feeling my self-awareness around a high level of anxiety of how complex, comprehensive, proud that I am a part of an organization, because I'm, I'm here to tell you, I'm not aware of an, an organization that's trying to dive this deep in public education to this. And feeling the social awareness of you folks wanting to get busy. If we could, Superintendent, could we, can we get to next Thursday and then see how far we come?
I think that's fair.
That's right.
Yeah.
And then do you give a timeline on, on that date?
Sure.
Once we know what we're into.
I think that's reasonable.
The third one is responsible decision-making. We just modeled that.
Nice.
I don't wanna stress out the administration.
Too bad, too late for that.
Okay, so we're nearing the end of our allotted time. Are there any final questions or comments for the good of the order? Director Leon?
Just a, more of a comment, just a sort of information. So I'm providing a lot of studies and data on the delayed start time to the board. I can do that electronically because the packet is this big and it's not, this is not all the information. I've kinda tried to put the information that has more, more power, more, more statistically significant evidence up front. So just so there's more to review. This isn't for immediate consumption and there's, there's a lot of citations. It's not for someone to read it all, but I want the board to be aware of it and the public to have access to it.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Congratulations, Elizabeth, you have one board meeting under your belt. We, we hope that you'll come back next Thursday.
Yeah, thank you very much. I feel quite welcome.
Glad to have you. With that, we are adjourned. We just have to go to a closed session.